Regular meeting of the 35th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
Councilmember Kadakel?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. First all of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadakel with support by Councilmember Edgar. Are there any changes, additions? Hearing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, please stand for the invocation. Pastor Growth is with us.
Father God, we thank you for this evening you've given us. We thank you for these people who work so hard for the good of the citizens of Berkeley. As we approach Thanksgiving, remind us of all that you have blessed us with. Think back over this year. We started with a very hard winter, went through a flood in the summer, and you have reminded us of the resilience of the city and also of the many good workers and public safety that we have here in Berkeley. We ask you to bless this time, bless this meeting, give wisdom, give discernment that the good of the citizens will be done tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
My name's Anella Mihayasku. I'm a citizen of Berkeley. I just have a short announcement to talk about. We have the Beautification Committee that's holding its third annual Holiday Spirit Award Contest this season, and it's basically a fun time when the committee gets to recognize those residential homes, as well as some of the local businesses that have done an outstanding job in decorating their property with holiday lights and some decorations that really warm up our season. So, we have open nominations, so neighbors can nominate neighbors. Self-nominations are definitely accepted as well. I encourage anyone interested to please send an email to BerkeleyBAC@gmail.com with the nomination of the address there, and once again, the email is Berkeley, B as in Boy, A C, at gmail dot com. The deadline for nominations is December 10th, and we will be recognizing the winners the following City Council meeting on the 15th. That's all I had intended to say, so thank you for your short time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Mike Garnett. I don't know if you remember me. I used to work here.[225.12][225.12](Laughter). I am here tonight to invite the mayor and the council to attend a special service we're having at the funeral home Sawyer Fuller on Saturday, and it will be at 2:00. And what this is about is, we have in our possession at the funeral home the cremains of six veterans that were never claimed by their friends and family, and we're going to do a special service for them, and then, following on Tuesday, they will be interred in the Great Lakes National Cemetery out in Holly. It's the right thing to do for these folks that have been forgotten, and I just wanted to make sure that all of you knew about it. If you'd like to attend, you're more than welcome, and it's 2:00 on Saturday. There'll be a small luncheon afterward at the American Legion. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marilyn Chikiraki. I live in Berkeley. I have been working for three months getting the debris out of my basement. The rotten stuff went first, but my basement was filled with crated and wrapped and unimaginable collection of everything. And I called and everybody, the beggars' purse, or whatever they are, the Billy Graham group came, and they said, "We can't get enough volunteers to get that stuff out of your basement." They said, "If you can get enough out, we'll help you." And before they left town, they called me, and they said, "No, it's still too much." I put out signs on the fence. People call me, and then they don't show up. There's mold in the basement. I bleached everything I could get to. We pulled out all the cabinets that was behind those. They went to the street. Finally, united way from the 211 number, there's a group called AmeriCorps contracted to come in. They were supposed to come tomorrow morning. I had someone there helping me get the last of the stuff, and it isn't everything because my husband, I can't believe. I mean, there were just models and all these things in a closet there, just unimaginable amount of debris. My yard looks terrible. You've probably all seen it. Nobody's called. It's right across from Rogers, and everybody has to look at that, and I have to look at it. I have no time to do anything else except remove things. They called me at 5:00 after City Hall closed, and they said, "We can't come. The City of Berkeley said that we cannot come back to Berkeley." I couldn't get to anybody because the 211 number shuts down at 5:00. The man never called me because the lady that called me, or the young girl, they're all volunteers, they're all young. She didn't know exactly what was said. I said, "Well, who said this? Did it come from the city manager? Did it come from the DPW?" She didn't really know, and she was supposed to have the man call me, but of course, he hasn't. So now I am filled with a yard full of debris still, which I thought would be gone in two days, and I'd like to know who in Berkeley said that, because I can hire somebody to haul the junk away. You know what I mean? They're going to cut out the, you know what everybody does, they cut the bottom out, and then they're going to spray. Because I scrubbed the mold, I sprayed, I'm probably used more bleach than anybody should have to get rid of it. Anyway, here I am, all of a sudden, with no one coming. I had SurfPro called. You know, you call all those numbers, it takes you half a day. They don't even answer, their phones, half of them, and some of them want $500 to do a mold test. Excuse me? And I don't know what's the truth and what's a lie. I don't have my furnace on. I don't even know if it works, but they said, "If there's mold in the basement, if you turn on the furnace, it'll blow the spores all over the house." And I really don't want that, but you know, all of a sudden, we hit this cold weather, and I don't know. I called and I got your lady in your office, but she didn't know, and I thought, "If she doesn't know, then it probably didn't come from your office," but I don't know why. If it's the debris, you know, you can hire people to haul that away, or get AmeriCorps, which is the company that said, "When you get enough out of there, call us, and we'll come back." And they explained to me, the second young, but they're all young people, they've only been here two weeks, and then they go home, and they're new young people. I don't know if they're messing up, if there's a complaint against the work they do, but it was my last chance. The guy from SurfPro who wants $4,000 to walk in the, you know, they charge a lot, he wouldn't even do it. He said, "I have to pay $36 an hour for people to haul this stuff out of here. When you get it out, call me." And that was when I had given up and thought, "I'll pay any price to get it done." Anyway, does anybody know?
Thank you for being here. We normally do not exchange conversation with somebody who comes to the microphone. However, may I suggest that you call the city manager in the morning, or leave your number at the city clerk's table, and the city manager will call you in the morning.
If we're not letting people help clean up.
Yeah, so the city manager will call you, and you guys can work out a solution that is appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Hi. My name is Sally Schroeder. I live at 2312 Thomas. I'm on a corner. That's Bell Bliss. She lives kitty cornerback. And we lived here forever, and every snowfall, when the snowplow comes through, they go like a bat out of hell, and they go up, the snow up to the sidewalk. And we can't get through the sidewalk, and especially last year with all the snow, we had such a problem with it. And when it comes, we can't get through it, and it's a safety item, where there's only three feet of space between the street and the sidewalk, so it goes up over onto our sidewalk. Where if they could just slow down, possibly, instead of going fast, where if there's nine feet, they're okay, like in our front yard, it's okay. We don't, it doesn't hit the sidewalk. But all these corner houses that have only that much space, it's not good for the people that walk, the kids. It's so hard to get through it, and it's solid ice that goes on it. So I'm just asking if they could maybe mention it to the DPW.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Deeds, Berkeley resident. I just finally put the Berkeley High School's community garden to bid. We'll have a few spots open next year for rent, but I want to thank the City of Berkeley businesses that made donations to the high school garden club and the school board for putting up the wrought iron fence with the Arbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular 35th City Council meeting on Monday, October 20th, 2014. Approval of the warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1284. Resolution number R3714, matter of accepting gifts from the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library to the Berkeley Public Library. Resolution number R3814, matter of accepting a donation from A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons to the Berkeley Public Library. And resolution number R3914, matter of accepting donated services from Four Seasons Garden Center to the Berkeley Public Library.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Councilmember Stedman. Are there any changes, corrections? It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Stedman to read resolution 3714.
This is a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, accepting gifts from the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library to the Berkeley Public Library. Whereas, the City of Berkeley, Berkeley Public Library, has received an early literacy computer for use in the children's room, an online calendar and registration system from the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library. And whereas, the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library purchased the touchscreen early literacy computer at a cost of $2,692, and purchased the online calendar and registration system at a cost of $1,450, which totals $4,142. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves that the Council of the City of Berkeley accept the gifts of the early literacy computer and the online calendar and registration system, and the gifts provided from the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library will be a superb enhancement to the children's room of the library, will improve staff efficiency, and provide a better experience to the public. And the Berkeley Public Library and City Council are grateful to the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library for their continued support and generosity toward the library and the benefit they provide to the community. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, November 17th, 2014. Signed by Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. And now, I have asked Councilmember Baker to read resolution 3814.
Thank you, Your Honor. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, accepting a donation from A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons to the Berkeley Public Library. Whereas, the City of Berkeley, Berkeley Public Library, has received a donation from A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons for the purchase of five magazine titles for use by the public at the library, and whereas, A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons has been a generous supporter of the library's magazine subscriptions, and has continued to make magazine titles available that enhance the library's offerings. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, section one, that the Council of the City of Berkeley accepts the donation from A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons, and, section two, the donated funds from A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons enables the library to provide a greater number of magazine titles for reading, advancement, and enjoyment by the public. And, section three, that the Berkeley Public Library and City Council are grateful to A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons for their generous support of the library's collection and for their contribution to the betterment of the community. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, November 17th, 2014. Signed, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have asked Councilmember Edgar to read resolution 3914.
Thank you, sir. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, accepting donated services from Four Seasons Garden Center to the Berkeley Public Library. Whereas, the City of Berkeley, Berkeley Public Library, has received donated services from Four Seasons Garden Center to beautify the area around the library. And whereas, Four Seasons Garden Center continues to maintain the plants and beds around the library building throughout the year. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, section one, that the Council of the City of Berkeley accept the donated services from Four Seasons Garden Center. And, section two, the donated services of Four Seasons Garden Center has beautified the library's stretch of Coolidge Highway and improved the appearance of the library grounds. And, section three, the Berkeley Public Library and City Council are grateful to Four Seasons Garden Center for their generous support of the library and the work they have done to enhance the community. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, November 17th, 2014. Signed, Phil O'Dwyer.
Thank you. Three very nice resolutions for respecting and responding to the generosity of people for our library, and we certainly appreciate all that so many people do to keep our library vibrant and responsive to our educational needs. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two?
Motion number M7314, matter of authorizing the Berkeley Lions Club to conduct a fundraiser on November 20th, 21st, and 22nd at the intersection of 12 Mile and Coolidge from 9:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. During these three days, representatives of the Berkeley Lions Club will wear reflective vests and collect money during daylight hours.
Is there a motion to approve M7314?
Motion to approve M7314.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Mayor Protem Turbrak.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Councilman.
I would like to abstain, as I'm an officer in the Berkeley Lions Club.
Without objection, may our colleague withdraw from voting on this item. Thank you. Mr. Sessa.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor of City Council. I really don't have too much to add to this item, except I'm here to answer any questions, and to please know that we do recommend this for your consideration.
Any discussion, questions regarding the Lions Club and this item? Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Not exactly a question, just, I guess, a clarification for those in the audience who may be wondering where some of these funds are going to go. It says, "The funds they raise will go towards helping local families over the holidays this winter and free eye screenings in the community, also towards leader dogs for the blind, the Beaumont Silent Children's Fund, and other community events." Thank you.
Very good. All worthy causes. If there are, if there is not additional discussion of this item, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M7414?
Kadakel? I'm sorry.
Oh, 7314, excuse me.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three?
Matter of approving the purchase of seven new digital in-car video, audio cameras, and related server with L3 Communications Mobile Vision Incorporated at a total cost of $45,583.65, which includes related equipment, installation, and a one-year warranty. The funds are available in the 2014-15 budget in account 10131098200 for equipment.
Is there a motion to approve M7414?
Motion to approve M7414.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by...
Everyone.[1246.92][1246.92](Laughter).
Everyone. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you.
Mr. Sessa.
You, Council, this is probably one of the most important items that we're presenting for you this evening. These types of equipment have become very critical to public safety officers all over the United States, and they're very critical. As you can see by the report that was put together by our Director of Public Safety, Rick Ashman, we did receive four different companies submit bids for this, and I'd like to thank the Director for all his work and his staff. This was a tremendous matter. We wanted to make sure that we selected the right company. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Director, Chief Ashman, and help me answer any questions that the Council may have. Again, we are recommending this. I know that the City Attorney has had an opportunity to review our procedure and our process, but to ask Chief Ashman if he could just please elaborate a little further as to how these cameras will be used. Chief Ashman?
Okay. I put together a rather lengthy memo. Sorry about the length of it, but there are a lot of details involved in this process. Our cameras are now out of warranty. We've had them for over six years. There was a five-year period where you can continually, annually extend your warranties. They are out of warranty, for the most part, out of parts, and sometimes you can buy after-the-market parts or used parts, but they're not reliable. So it's time to get cameras. We are seeking some high-definition video image cameras, automatic wireless downloading. When the Skylark drives into the parking lot, it automatically remotely downloads into the system. We also want automatic backup reproduction of stored data. This is extremely critical, and we put that in the RFP. And what that is, as opposed to standard downloads, where you identify what you want downloaded and put it onto the server, onto storage components, this system will automatically download it onto DVDs. That's important, because that way, in the event of power failures, power surges, mechanical failures, floods, anything else, your storage is not destroyed. It's already downloaded to DVD. Some of this is real technical, by the way. I should digress a moment here. Some of this is technical, and not being fluent in computer ease, I have brought backup myself.[1406.78][1406.78](Laughter). In the presence of Stan Lysicka, who's the city's IT coordinator, and Sergeant Andrew Hatfield, who's my department's techie, so if I start to stutter here and get hung up, or if you have any technical questions, they are here to answer them. But anyway, I'm sure everybody understands the point about storage. We never know what will be needed. In two of the three other bidders besides the company that we are recommending, which is L3 Communications, two of them did not have high definition, so you don't capture as much as you want evidentiary-wise. That goes without saying. The sharper the picture, the better that is for our identification purposes and subsequent evidentiary purposes. They didn't have the automatic, automated, the automatic download onto a reproduction system, a backup system, onto DVDs. So you have to figure out what you want to save, and then you have to save it onto an ever-expanding saving stack of devices, and that becomes very expensive. If you do not do that, two years after an incident, you can discover now we need the data. Did we download it? One of our neighbors, we recently had a case, their detectives needed something. After 60 days, theirs is gone. Well, you can't, we can't have that. So, obviously, this is a component that's necessary. They do, others come with download capabilities, but again, they redundant it onto a storage computer, and you have to keep buying more and more and more space for the entire five or six years, however long you have this. So we got down to L3 Communications as the only one providing all of the components we need, and as I said, two of them were cheaper. One of them didn't even offer a server. We're not going there. The other one was $1,000 cheaper. Their warranty was more cost-effective, and in fact, with that $1,000 cheaper system, while we weren't going to get high-def, we weren't going to get automatic backup, we were going to save about $8,000 in the five years on warranties. However, again, we're going to spend 10 to 12 on storage devices, so it more than offsets it, so that we couldn't go there. The only one that offered most of what we had, in the end, as the memo displays, it would be about $19,000 more expensive. And again, we don't have the download to the DVD backup system. So, we are recommending L3 Communications. Additionally, we now have L3 communication cameras. I have eight of them. One was on the motorcycle, seven in the marked cars. And again, this is all for the marked cars. Those cameras will be interoperable with our new system, those old cameras. Now I will be able to also put some in the detective cars, into the animal control vehicle, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, there's no warranty on them, but we've never had a camera break down. That's not where the breakage occurs. So we can expand temporarily, augment the number of cameras we have. If they start to break, we just take them out of a vehicle we consider the lesser priority. The cameras in the new cars, or the new cameras, rather, in the marked cars will be warranted. So, we're all set. So we will have been able to expand our fleet. And it's always important to get things recorded, and you'd never know which vehicle that's going to be. Obviously, the marked cars, but also the detective cars, animal control, even a fire truck could have this. There's an argument to be made for all these. So, for nothing, we span temporarily the number of cameras we have operating. So, all in all, L3 Communications is the way we seek to go. Now, if anyone has any questions?[1653.13][1653.13](Laughter). I'll be happy to try to answer them.
We got any questions for the Chief? Councilmember Blanchard?
Just a comment. I totally agree with the Chief. This gives us better capability with our other vehicles. I would like to see if, for instance, in the flood, if we'd had cameras in some of those fire trucks, we would have seen some very interesting things on some of the runs we were on that night, that we could have captured also, and been more documentation for FEMA and the things we do. The cameras in all these vehicles are becoming more and more important because of the NIMS protocols, the National Incident Management System, that we have to document, and we have to keep records for all of our claims against the government. So, it's even more and more important for that. Thank you.
Well, and one other point, somehow I was reminded of it. We have data stored for the last six years on this system, on these DVDs. Those are not readable on anybody else's computer. Those are not final product DVDs. Those are readable only on an L3 system. So if we were to go to any other company's system, we would have to maintain two servers, the new one and the old one, in order to read these DVDs and reproduce DVDs, which could be read by attorneys or by the officers or whatever. So there's another factor of keeping the same company.
Anybody else has questions, items? What about the security of the information? If it transmits to downloadable sources, once you come within a certain proximity of the building? Could it be, could that information...
It's readable only on that equipment. You can't, you cannot. Let me look around for reassurance.[1765.83][1765.83](Laughter). Correct, right? Okay. Somebody can't sit out in the parking lot and...
That's what I was...
...receive that.
Confident would be the answer.[1777.03][1777.03](Laughter). Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for the presentation. The details were very insightful to help understand the various complexities involved and all the care with which we're seeking to protect this vital information. Is it more of just a procedural question in terms of the time it takes to install these? Is it, will the vehicles be out of service for a certain... Is it, will the vehicles be out of service for a certain amount of time, or is it just kind of a pop-out, the old pop in the new? Could you explain the installation process a little bit for us, so we kind of... There you go. Nice.
You had to get those guys out there.
I was fishing for some... No. I just wanted to thank you personally for what you've done, so...
Good evening, Sergeant Hatfield. The basic install is a two-day process. The first part of the install is where they bring in the new server, they have to change some of the wireless access points, and get everything up and running with the new system. And then they migrate all the old videos over the last thirty days into it, so we don't lose anything. Once that new system is up and running, there's a training process with that. As it's going on, the additional, the seven patrol cars are being outfitted. That is outsourced through Cruisers, which is part of this included in the cost here. The outsourcing agency Cruisers comes in, in over two days, gets the vehicles done. So we won't be down any vehicles other than one vehicle at a time, and the server will never be down. So the one will remain while the other's being installed. But theoretically, within two days is our quote. And I know last time, when they installed this, six years ago, they were done in about a day, and then the next day was just some of the training because it was a brand-new system. So we've had great success with them before.
Excellent. A follow-up question on that. With the cascade of the existing equipment into the other vehicles that don't have those today, do we see a similar installation schedule for that?
Technically, they're not too hard to install. I've worked with these systems hands-on. Since we've been out of warranty for the last year, I've been doing all the maintenance, coming in late at night and, you know, working on a camera and exchanging parts, trying to keep things up and running.
Right.
Which has saved a cost with not having to purchase that over the last year. Other than supplying power, making the connections, it's not too hard. And theoretically, it could be done in a day, whether that was done through the Public Works Department or an outside vendor. It's not too hard to install, other than taking the car apart to get the wires run.
Sure.
But definitely something. And once they're up and running, they're ready to go.
Nice. And then the current equipment, will it still be able to talk to the new server, or would we need to have both servers?
Nope. The new server is a version three. I guess you could say it accepts all versions one and two. We currently have version two.
Right.
So anything that we have with the new seven patrol cars would be, of course, working, and any of the old, they go by IP addresses. All of those will sync in with the software we have. The estimate or the quote on this is, including a large server, to be able to handle all of that, and anything in the future that we decide to add to the system, it can also support. So if for some reason there was an eighth or a ninth camera newly that we had to purchase, we can still hold that. And the high-def quality is beyond belief. At some point, we'll give you a demonstration there. Truly, truly remarkable, so...
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing done, then. Ms. Spouch, would you please call the roll on M seventy-four, fourteen?
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now Ms. Spouch, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M seventy-five, fourteen. Matter of receiving and filing the Berkeley Public Library Annual Report for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen.
Is it a motion to approve M seventy-five, fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman, with support by Councilmember Edgar. Mr. Sessa.
You know, counsel, ordinarily, we just put this on your back of your agenda, and we let you read it at your leisure. But this being our, one of the very first times that our library director has had an opportunity to come before you all, I thought it'd be a good idea to have him give a verbal presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Church.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So libraries like to record lots of data and information and keep tally marks for things. And the annual report is a way for us to communicate that with you all and then also the public. So coming in as library director here, I wanted to take our old annual report, which is filled with really great information, but it is quite substantial. It's a fifteen, twenty-page document, and I have transformed it into just a single page. You'll see it in the full council handout, bright colors, and it really just conveys numbers and data that might be of interest to the public. So I wanted to create something that we could post on Facebook, we could post on our website, and people could look at it and quickly extract a few tidbits of information that were of interest to them. So you'll see that we've got likes on the library's Facebook page. That's been a huge area of growth over the last year. Five hundred and forty-three there, but it's now already at six hundred and twenty-six. So we continue to use that as a way to interact and communicate with people. I was really pleased to see that sixty-two times the library was mentioned in local press releases, various news outlets, and then gifts and donations there in the bottom right corner. It's just nice to see the support that we've received throughout the year toward the library. And then moving up the page there, you can see how many people attended programs. So we had two hundred and sixty-one programs attended by four thousand one hundred and eighty-nine people. These are all big, powerful, exciting numbers. Next year, you'll see Wi-Fi usage conveyed on there, and then also gate count for the public as well. So can I answer? Any questions about the annual report or the new format?
Any questions for our library? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. A quick question. I noticed we have seven thousand nine hundred and sixty library cardholders. Is there a rule of thumb, so to speak, to what percentage of the population normally has a library card? Because that's over fifty percent of our population. I was just wondering if that was good, bad, or always ranked?
I don't know that there's any benchmark or norm there. I mean, certainly over fifty percent is good. Sixty or seventy-five would be even better. So, you know, we continue to see people coming in and signing up. We just had the National Library Card Sign-Up Month in September. So we're trying to work more with the schools to get kids signed up at a younger age and get them hooked at the start.
I think that's very good.
Good.
I do, too. Councilmember Kadakel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a comment. When I was going over this report over the weekend, what a great report, bright, clear. And I want to thank you, Mr. Church, and your staff for the great work that you're doing at the library.
Thank you very much. We all appreciate it.
Councilmember Stedman?
I was just going to thank you for the report also. It's really concise and clear and understandable.
Excellent. Thank you.
And also, I'd just like to make a comment about the Friends of the Library and their over nine thousand dollar donation.
Yes.
They have two major sales, book sales during the year, that the community contributes to, and thank you very much. But one is the softcover book sale at Berkeley Days and the hardcover book sale in October.
Correct.
And thanks to the community, they're able to raise a lot of those funds.
Yeah.
So, but thank you for this report. It's great.
Good. Good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Baker?
Sure. Thank you. I'd like to add to the choir here. Thank you for the visual layout. I think it's very aesthetic. Those of you, if you get a chance to see it, check it out. It does look fantastic. I love the flow, nice design here and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Well thought through. And all that this represents, right? Again, I think what our colleagues are talking about here is each, behind each number is a person and a story, and some interest, and some curiosity, and some value that you and the staff and the volunteers provide. And so these numbers mean a lot, and what they represent means even more. So thank you for helping make it so easy to see in visuals that we can just understand all that this has to offer.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nicely said. Well, on that comment, then, Ms. Spouch, would you please call the roll on M seventy-five, fourteen?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now Ms. Spouch, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M seventy-six, fourteen. A matter of approving the Adilio agreement form between the Berkeley Public Library and the Library Network for downloadable library content.
Is it a motion to approve M seventy-six, fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Edgar, with support by Councilmember Kadakel. See, the library is dominating the agenda tonight.
It's library night.
That's a very good sign of the community.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, again, this is a good service that we're providing to our residents. You know, downloadable books is just becoming a thing that everyone does now, and we certainly are very pleased to be presenting this before the city council. I have asked our city attorney to review the agreement, and he has recommended it as well for your consideration. But now to tell you a little bit about how this is going to work, working with TLN, I've asked our library director to go into a little bit more detail. Mr. Church?
Good. Thank you. So you'll see in the memorandum there that downloadable content is really the largest area of growth for library circulation and usage. In two thousand twelve, in September, we had four hundred and sixteen downloads, and September of this year, we had eight hundred and eighty-two downloads. So that's the area that we're growing. So far, we've worked with the Library Network and a group of a couple dozen libraries to have the Overdrive downloadable book platform. And Odilo is now the new kid on the block, and it's a new service offered by TLN. Odilo works with midlists, backlists, self-published, and local authors. So these aren't going to be your Stephen Kings. They're really mainstream authors, but it's going to provide a different mix of content to people. And this collection is one that they're developing right now. So they're getting libraries signed up for this, and they're making it very attractive. TLN is absorbing the annual platform fee and the one-time setup fee for libraries that sign on by December thirty-first. So for the first three years, the only cost that we'll have is eleven cents per checkout, which is a very reasonable cost. TLN is also paying to establish the starting day collection, so we won't have any costs there either. So really, this will just be a supplemental service to our current downloads, and it's hard to say how much use we'll get. I'm not expecting over two thousand checkouts per year, just because it is going to be a more eclectic collection.
Any discussion on this item? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, this be, say on my iPad, this will be another app I have to get to get to that system?
Correct. Yes.
Go out of the App Store and get the app and put it on here to get the Odilo.
Yes.
Because we have Overdrive now.
Yes, you have the Overdrive app. This will be another thing.
I'll make sure that our citizens understood that. How's that going to work?
Yes. Yeah, and tied in with this will be a big training component to help get the word out. I mean, the big dream in the sky is that one day you can go to one place and download all sorts of content, but technology just isn't there yet, at least in the library world.
Thank you.
Councilmember Edgar?
Thank you. I did a little bit of research on Odilio. Is that how you say it?
Odilo, Odilio, yeah.
And although, you know, it is a new company, like you said, three years, they're tied into another company with twenty-five years' experience. So that kind of made me feel good about this. Can you explain a little bit more about, it's not going to be mainstream books? I thought I read somewhere, and I was just scanning quickly, that it was mostly nonfiction they're dealing with?
No, it'll be a mix of fiction and nonfiction.
Okay.
There will be some authors there that you'll recognize, but most of them will be the smaller publishing houses. This is a way for them to get, you know, newer authors out in front of people. Odilo will be making, you know, arrangements with the individual publishers to bring their content on board. So, you know, the big seven or eight publishers aren't playing in this landscape, but this Odilo platform is definitely getting attention in the publishing world and the library world in general. The Library Network was recently written up in a professional magazine for undertaking this framework. So it's an exciting opportunity for us to be part of.
It really is. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, then, Ms. Spouch, would you please call the roll on M seventy-six, fourteen?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now Ms. Spouch, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M seventy-seven, fourteen. Matter of awarding the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen DDA Holiday Lights Decorations Program to Leclerc Display Company Incorporated of Ann Arbor, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars.
Is it a motion to approve M seventy-seven, fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman, with support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Sessa?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, beautifying our city, especially during the holidays, is very important, not just to the city, but also to the Downtown Development Authority. And the Downtown Development Authority has considered this request, and they are recommending it for your consideration as well. At our last meeting, they examined the proposal that we presented before them, and they approved it. I'd like to ask our Director of Public Works, Mr. Derek Schuler, who's done a tremendous job at putting this together, because it's not as simple as you may think when it comes to decorating lights and putting them on trees, and then, of course, with a budget as tight as ours, even though it may seem like this is a lot of money, and certainly it is, but rest assured, we nowhere near hit the top or the least amount that people are paying in order to do these lights. And they are very, very expensive. I'd like to also express my appreciation to the DDA Promotions Committee as well, who works with both the Director and I. And they, too, have examined other proposals that some other individuals have come about. But although they were quite beautiful, they're certainly in the hundred thousand dollar level, very, very expensive. So when you look at this amount here, it's truly a lot more reasonable than some of the others. But I'm going to stop right there, because I'm going to take away all this thunder, and I'm going to let our Director explain a little bit about what this proposal is all about. Now, please, no, city council, again, this is for an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, which means we may not spend that whole amount, but I know that the DDA wanted to be able to have some leverage on how they wanted to spend those dollars. Okay? Mr. Schuler?
Thank you very much. Jack of all trades, I guess sometimes you get holiday decorations. I now know quite a bit more than I knew before, so that's a good thing. The DDA had asked us to put together this RFP, Request for Proposals, to do a Holiday Lights Decorations Program for the downtown area, Twelve Mile and Coolidge. So I put together essentially this RFP, open-ended RFP, to take any and all ideas, and as you flip through your agenda, you can see the packet. We got basically one bidder for this project, and they provided some sketches and some detail on what they were proposing. I was hoping to get a few more bidders, but eventually only one submitted the bid. So thankfully, they seem to be a very reputable company, and they've been doing this for a long time. So in your packet, you can see what they proposed, which is essentially some lighted poinsettias that will go on the light poles, some wreaths, light some bushes, bring in a Christmas tree, miscellaneous-type items that they've proposed. And there's a couple of different options that were put in the RFP, one for just Twelve Mile and Coolidge intersection, and then an option for three intersections, Twelve and Coolidge, Twelve and Robina, Coolidge and Franklin. And it looks like they're going to go for all three intersections, Jane, if I'm correct. And that was a seven thousand dollar number that they had proposed, and they had an interest in expanding that. That's why we're bringing it before you to try to expand it. They budgeted more funds, so they would like to expand it if they can. So I think our plan is to present this to you tonight, seek your approval, and then try to regroup with them here in short order and make some decisions about additional items that we might be able to add. But I contacted the references for Le Clerk out of Ann Arbor, and I contacted three of the references. All three were very positive. All three had been doing business with this company for several straight years, so that made me feel good. Again, being that we only had the one bid, you have concerns about their experience. And these folks seem to be doing a good job for many of their clients. So we're recommending the thirteen thousand not to exceed, and we'll meet with them here shortly to try to expand the program, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, it was an open-ended RFP. We were looking for ideas and suggestions, and they suggested what's in your packet, which is decorating the light poles, lights, bringing in a tree. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions, discussion? Councilmember Redger.
Thanks. Is the tree they're bringing in for, it's for the gazebo here? Is that what I'm reading correctly on the little diagram?
I'm looking at option two here on their sheet, and it says the one twelve-to-fifteen-foot live tree is at the Twelve Mile and Robina area. Is where they have it tagged.
And it is live?
That's correct, with many lights and a bow on top. And there's the poinsettias that are referenced as well. In the DPW, we're still going to plan to light the light poles as we've done the last couple of years. So I think our thought is let these folks come in and do their work, and then we'll come back in and supplement it as we've done in past years.
Right, thank you.
And it does include the rental maintenance. If we have any problems, they will come out. I did have a reference tell me that they were great about responding when there was a problem, a strand of lights is out or what have you. They were very responsive, so that was good to hear. So it's going to include the rental, putting it up, maintenance, and taking it down.
Very good. Mayor Protem Terbrack.
If this is accepted, we move ahead. When will this be completed?
The spec, late November is when the installation is to occur. So this is a very aggressive timeframe, and we'll have to meet with them here quickly. And he expressed that, that he needs decisions made quickly to me, so we need to make decisions quickly. Late November and then early January is when the items will come down. There isn't specific dates in the contract, but we specified those periods of time.
So we assume everything will be up by December sixth?
Yes, very important date. Excellent, thank you.
Anybody else weigh in on this? Very good. Mr. Sessa.
Yes, sir.
Would you explain briefly why the City Council gets to vote on this, and it's proposed by the DDA, for the sake of our audience at home?
Yes, Your Honor. Simply because it exceeds the amount that's permitted in our purchasing ordinance. Anything that's over seven thousand must come before the City Council for final consideration.
Exactly right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M seventy-seven fourteen?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M seventy-eight fourteen, matter of allowing the city manager to purchase furniture from Discount Office Equipment, nineteen ninety-one Coolidge Highway, Berkeley, for use in City Hall and Public Safety Department offices, in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Funding is from Public Safety Account Number one oh one, three one zero, nine eight one, zero zero zero, and City Hall Account Numbers one oh one, two six five, nine eight one, zero zero zero, and one oh one, one seven two, nine eight one, zero zero zero.
Is there a motion to approve M seventy-eight fourteen?
Motion to approve M seventy-eight fourteen.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Sessa.
So, City Council, I am going to be addressing this item before you this evening. This is a labor of hard work that was put together by various departments. And as you know, every year when we go through our budget, the City Council approves certain items, certain pieces of equipment for various departments. This year, for the first time, in order to perhaps get us the best price possible that's out there, we decided to collaborate and purchase all these items together. So you'll see items here that are required for our Public Safety Department, items here that are required for administration at City Hall, and some at Public Safety. Many of these items, specifically the stacking chairs and the folding tables, those are items that are going to be replaced at our Public Safety Building. And I can tell you that many of these items that are being replaced are more than, I don't know, I don't even know how, I don't even know how long these items have been here. I know some of them have been here for more than twenty years, some of these items have been here for more than ten years, but these are very, very outdated pieces of equipment, especially many of the chairs that are in the City Hall area. They're just, they're in need of replacement. The chairs are just badly worn and long overdue. So we decided to work together and go out as one. The only department here that we're going to ask to hold off for a little while is the court for now, until we figure out what's going to happen there. But we did get a good bid, we believe. We received four bids from four different companies. We are recommending Discount Office Equipment, which is a company here in the city of Berkeley. They're a little higher than Office Express, but not by much, just a couple of hundred dollars. I'd say about, looking at here, about maybe three, three hundred or four, not much. We have worked with Discount Office Equipment in the past. They provided us with quality material, and they've been very prompt. And certainly, we'd like to consider a local business as well, which is what I would recommend City Council to consider. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Your Honor. This is within our budget, and all of these items were approved in this year's budget.
Any questions for the city manager? Any discussion on this item?
One quick question, Your Honor. There's a discrepancy I noticed under, it says Reception Seat One. Everybody else's bid was between a hundred and sixty-five and a hundred and seventy dollars, but ADT American bid sixty-seven, hundred and sixty-six dollars. Is that possibly an error?
I think that's an error, Your Honor.
Have you bid something that's really fancy?
That was my chair.
Thank you for catching that.
Mayor Protem, I can understand that now.
Yes, Your Honor, it's probably an error. I will look into that, just to clarify, but yes.
Very good, very good catch.
Thank you. Embarrassing.
Any other points to be made on, what happens to the old furniture, the old chairs that these will replace?
I guess the Finance Director's looking at me. We'll put them out to bid for auction, where people can buy them, and hopefully, the city will recover some of this cost. Those that are usable, otherwise, they'll go into trash.
Very good. Hearing no additional comments, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M seventy-eight fourteen?
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight?
Resolution number R forty-fourteen, matter of approving a resolution on electing to comply with the provision of Public Act one fifty-two of two thousand and eleven by exercising the city's right to exempt itself from the requirements of the Act for calendar year two thousand and fourteen.
Is there a motion to approve R forty-fourteen?
Move to approve R forty-fourteen.
Moved by Councilmember Kadakel, with support from the Mayor Protem. Mr. Sessa.
Council, I know that we've brought this item to you in the past for your consideration. This is something that we are still recommending the City Council to consider. Healthcare is a very important matter. I know that the Finance Director and I will be examining this item again, and perhaps in future years, this may be something that we may no longer be able to do. But for now, we are recommending it for your consideration. What I'd like to do now is ask our Finance Director to elaborate a little further on his report. He's done a very good job in putting together memorandum and a resolution for your consideration. So with that, Mr. Subuata, could you explain this matter, please?
Thank you, Mrs. De Sessa. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. What you have before you this evening is, again, we're coming into compliance with Public Act one fifty-two of two thousand and eleven. The, there are three options, okay? The first option being an eighty-twenty employee contribution. The second option being coming under the default option, which we do not meet this year. We went through the calculations, and we were slightly over. And then the third option is to opt out. And basically, what's happening here is that we will, we'd like to negotiate versus just say, here it is. And we'll come to the table, we're going to be starting relatively soon, and negotiating these changes that we need. We may do better than eighty-twenty. We may do worse, but at the end of the day, we're at least determining our own destiny as we move forward in the, through the fiscal year. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Very good. Any additional questions, discussion on this item? We did this in the past.
Yes, sir.
And it seems wise to continue for the time being. And we're talking about insurance, everything is for the time being. Because it's subject to change quickly.
Daily.
Daily, daily, that's right. So no discussion, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R forty-fourteen?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number nine?
Motion number M seventy-nine fourteen, matter of approving the two thousand and fifteen City Council Regular Meeting Calendar.
Is there a motion to approve M seventy-nine fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker, with support by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Sessa.
Council, this is the first time our city clerk gets to put this together, and she was very excited. She gets to tell us when our meetings are for the upcoming year. And with that, I'm going to give her a little bit of experience here to approach the City Council and just elaborate on these dates, okay? So with that, Ms. Boucher.
Okay. For, we had to take in consideration the city holidays and also the upcoming elections. For January, there was Martin Luther King on Monday, January nineteenth. For February, there was President's Day on Monday, February sixteenth. And we do have, in September, Labor Day on Monday, September seventh. And our elections, we are looking at a May election possibly, and we do have a local election in November. And I believe that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on these dates? Councilmember Kadakel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick point for any of those that are Tiger fans, that Monday, April sixth will be opening day, so you may have to leave the game early. But beside that, I think it's a good schedule. Thank you.
I did make a note that the March meeting is before the Irish holiday, not after, which makes some of the people on the council much more productive.
Absolutely. And we are indebted to Ms. Boucher. We are indebted to Ms. Boucher for that arrangement. Very good. Any other wise or suitable comment? Well, hearing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M seventy-nine fourteen?
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting. Ms. Boucher, who's up first?
Baker.
Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you. Good evening again, everybody. A couple of quick updates, first from the transit perspective. A fair amount of news out there these days around regional transit and conversations there. We are part of a regional transit authority, which has a new CIO, Michael Ford. He recently spoke with the public at a summit event and had an opportunity to interact with municipalities and residents and businesses and folks like that, who had questions and ideas and comments and excitement around what we can and potentially should do around our region with regional transit. So that is really exciting. Secondly, post-election here, our state legislature has been busy on many fronts. And one of the things that they've sought to advance, at least from the Senate perspective, is some much-needed transportation funding. If anybody has been on the road in, oh, let's say, the last, like, year or decade, you'll know that the roads are in desperate need of some much-needed care. And so there's a package of bills that have been put through the Senate, which would provide that much-needed funding. So it's our opportunity to encourage our House Representatives to likewise support passage of bills that would help fund those needed repairs. And finally, we've talked a lot about and had a great journey thus far with transit along Woodward Avenue. As you know, coming on three years now, we've had discussions about options for transit up and down our little backyard here, a little part of the region. We've put together a document that describes our findings and our recommendation. It has a technical name, which is called the Locally Preferred Alternative, but basically, think of it as our proposal or our recommendation on how transit could work along the Woodward Corridor. That's now been finished and turned in to the R T A for their consideration. It's available online. All these materials are available online if you're interested to see the proposal, the recommendations for the line, and how it might work, and where the stops might be. It's available, there's a website called Woodwardanalysis.com, Woodwardanalysis.com. The link is right there, it's free PDF to download and enjoy. I know it's ereading to go see all of this kind of fun stuff, which is really great. The next steps are to engage in a broader conversation with other main corridors in and around our region here, because one stretch along Woodward Avenue itself wouldn't necessitate a full transit system. It's an important part of it, but there's certainly more to it than that. So it's our part to engage in that dialogue as well. The elections were held a few weeks back, Tuesday, November fourth. My congratulations and gratitude to the city clerk and all the staff and the volunteers and folks that helped to make it a smooth and fair election, and the great work that goes into that, to provide that information and make it safe and comfortable and easily accessible for those who either vote ahead of time with absentee or on the day of the polls, which is fantastic. Some interesting results in there, and Alexander Gerald once said that the customer isn't always right, but they do have a point. The customer isn't always right, but they do have a point. And of course, I'm thinking about the Charter Amendment that just recently went through. Three thousand eight hundred and eleven people, which is over sixty-two percent of those who chose to vote, voted in favor of that. And so they're telling us a message there, right? There's a story to be had, a conversation that folks are looking to engage in around what this means for us and how do we work with this. I know there's certainly some guidance at the state level and things that kind of put some certain parameters around this. And so I'm just wondering, this is more of just an open question about how we might choose to, as a region, maybe the Woodward Five or some kind of way to engage in a dialogue around this. And so there's a message there, you know, and it's something for us to think about. And with that, I'll conclude my message. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Stedman.
Okay. First of all, the library. Last week, there was a program at the library on Detroit Architecture, and they had seventy-one people in attendance. It was incredible. There's another program, well, there was one tonight, but, you know, I announced it last time, and it's over. But it was the basics of origami, and that would have been a fun class to go to. There's going to be another one Tuesday, December ninth, at six-thirty. And this one is the one about Sears Homes in Berkeley. The Sears catalog homes that you ordered through a catalog many years ago, and it was a kit. They'll have you, give you a photograph tour of over thirty Kit Homes found in Berkeley from Sears and other Kit Home manufacturers. So sign up, that's Tuesday, December ninth. Call the library and sign up ahead of time. I have a feeling that one will be crowded, too. Also, don't forget the Holiday Lights. That the person was here earlier, Anella, made the announcement of the Holiday Lights contest and its decorations over the holidays of homes in Berkeley. If you would like to nominate yourself, or if you have a neighbor that you would like to nominate, please send them to the City of Berkeley Beautification Advisory Committee. And also, they're looking, the advisory committee is looking for goals for beautification in Berkeley for next year. So if anybody has any ideas for goals, send them to me, and I'll take them to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor, a few things tonight. I'd like to talk a little bit about, a week ago yesterday, the Public Safety Department was involved in a major exercise. It was what they call a MABUS Box Alarm, which is the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System. And it was an evaluation of how we would conduct a response to a three-alarm fire. It was held in Oak Park at a closed store, big box store down there. And it was, in a three-alarm fire, we would have the following units respond. Berkeley, Beverly Hills, Huntington Woods, Oak Park, Claussen, Farmington, Troy, Franklin-Bingham, Bloomfield Hills, Alliance Mobile Health, and Oakland County Dispatch would be participating. And all of those units showed up down there. All of the units went through staging areas, they were deployed around the building, they hooked up, they sprayed water, and they were evaluated. There was evaluators from Troy, Independence Township, and Brandon. We have not seen the report on this yet, but what they do is, all of the radio traffic is captured. We go to a special radio frequency, all radio traffic is captured and recorded, and they replay all that, listen to it, make comments on the radio traffic, write up a report of all their observations. So we should be getting an interesting report. And I was very impressed. I was there with Lieutenant Crum, we're observers of this, and found it to be very professional, it was well-conducted, and all of our units that participated learned a lot. And another round of training, the Police Department, Fire Department, has been going through training up at Crest Academy, a local community college, and in that training, they've been done at the Fourth and done at the fourth and the eleventh. They did radio training, forcible entry, how to cut through a door to get into a building if we need to get into a fire. There was positive pressure ventilation training, and uses of our fans to be more productive. And there was flashover training, which was interesting. For those of you that don't know, carbon monoxide burns at eleven hundred and twenty-eight degrees. And we were in that box watching it burn over our heads as it was rolling over our heads. So it was close to two thousand degrees in there. It's a real confidence building exercise. You know that you can survive it, and you know to keep low. So it was very interesting. On a completely different note, the Chamber of Commerce is going to have a Berkeley Bucks thing going on this month. What it says is, "Visit participating Berkeley businesses on November twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth to receive Berkeley Bucks good for five dollars off a purchase of ten dollars or more of regularly priced items from December first through the twenty-fourth, 2014. Plus, you'll be entered to win a great raffle prize when you spend your Berkeley Bucks." And the participating businesses are Alco Glass, Amici's Pizza, City Style, Council Resale, Mediu Boutique and Gift Shop, Oddfellow Antiques, Or Green Topia, The Recipe Kit Warehouse, Rediscovered Furniture, Republica, The Room Downstairs, and Twice Around Antiques. So there may be more coming onto that list, but that's going on the end of this month, and we're doing this to encourage shopping and dining in Berkeley. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor Protem Terbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we move towards Thanksgiving here, there are a number of events that are gonna be happening in the city of Berkeley in December, and I will have an opportunity. None of these events I'm gonna discuss now are prior to our next meeting, December first, so this is just a heads-up. I'll give you one more warning. Starting first, December sixth, there is Jumparama Holiday Extravaganza. That is part of the Holiday Lights festivities prior to the parade, which will take place later that evening. This Jumparama is from two to five at the Community Center. Parks and Recreation is teaming up with Jumparama to sponsor this event. Activities include pictures with Santa, craft station, where the crafts that are made will be sent to military overseas, bounce houses, an appearance by Elmo, and much, much more. Now, if you register for this by December first, it will only cost you fifteen bucks. If you register after December first, it will cost you twenty bucks. However, special deal that I will tell you on tonight, admission will be half price if a toy is brought and donated to Toys for Tots. Okay? Very special information. Half-off admission if you bring a toy to donate for Toys for Tots. And again, that's December sixth from two to five at the Community Center. Later that day, as I mentioned, is the parade. I certainly hope to see everybody there. December seventh, you will get an opportunity to skate with Santa. That is at the Ice Arena from five to six fifty PM. Donate two or more canned goods, and you get to skate for free. All the donations will be given to our local Saint Vincent de Paul. December eleventh will be the Senior Holiday Party at Farina's Banquet Center. I know that's always a big event every year. That is from twelve-thirty to two-thirty PM. You can sign up at the Community Center. And December thirteenth will be Candy Cane Lane from ten AM to four PM at the Berkeley Community Center. And if you're wondering what that is, I'm not gonna tell you yet. It's December thirteenth. I'm just gonna kind of whet your appetites for now. I will have more information for you if I decide at our next meeting. But this way, you will be able to begin planning all of your December events. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reddor?
Thank you. I wanna thank, again, the friends of the Berkeley Public Library, A.G. Desmond and Sons, and the Four Seasons Garden Center for helping make our library the exciting progressive lending center that it is. The new format, as we all spoke about, was clean and comprehensive. I think Matt did a grand job. The move to incorporate Odello's an exciting forward-thinking plan, and I look forward to hearing about how it works. Richard Eshman, as always, is on the top of the crucial cutting edge as well regarding what's necessary to run one of Michigan's finest public safety departments. Thank you for your continual diligence. I had the pleasure this past week of attending the Tri-County Coalition Leadership Breakfast with guest speaker Stephen Henderson, who was eloquent and informative. I want to thank Judy Rubenstein and all of those involved for that exciting presentation. Oh, gosh, with the prospect of Christmas coming and the decorations going up throughout the city, the lighting at the intersections of Coolidge and Robina and throughout our beautiful city and our downtown area, it reminds us just how quickly time passes. Enjoy the moment. Don't rush it, and have a beautiful, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadakel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank Matt Church, who's the president of the Rotary Club, and the entire Rotary Club for putting on such a fantastic breakfast, pancake breakfast. This year, it was different because it was at the high school, and it worked out well. There were people coming in from beginning of time, from the time it started till the time it ended. And our own city attorney won a part of the fifty-fifty raffle, but we won't discuss that. Also, I wanted to say thank you to the American Legion and the VFW for the moving ceremony that they had last Tuesday on Veterans Day, right here in front of the gazebo. They always do a masterful job. Volunteers. We're always talking about volunteers and how important they are, but we still need some. On the Zoning Board of Appeals, we're looking for new members. And I highly recommend either go on to the website, BerkeleyMish.org, or even contact City Hall and find out what openings there are for volunteers, because we can always use some more. And I want to thank those that are already doing such a great job. And last but not least, have a happy and a safe Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa?
Mr. Mayor, I really don't have much more to add. Thank you, Counsel, for all your work in keeping our residents informed. The only thing I guess I should add is, we will put much of this information on our website at BerkeleyMish.org, so people can look for that. I know that we've had several calls already for people wanting to know about the holiday decoration contest from the Beautification Committee, which is good. Hope I got their email address correctly. I'm gonna repeat it once, but if it's wrong, it's Berkeley, B-A-C, at gmail dot com. And we will put that out on the website so that people can get that. And, 'cause I said, we've already had a few calls from residents interested in participating, so I think that's a good sign, that people are anxious to decorate their homes and beautify our community. And I, too, I've attended many of the events that the Council discussed this evening. Tremendous work by all. I'd also like to express my appreciation to the individuals who donated all of those items to the library. This is something that they've done for many, many years, many of them, in particular, the Four Seasons Garden Center. They've done this for many, many years, for as long as I've been here that I can recall, that they've just gone out there and maintained our library. So thank you very much to them. With that, Your Honor, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mrs. Suboda?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stedman?
I think it was Councilmember Baker brought up the topic of marijuana a little bit earlier. And the vote that the city just went through earlier this month, and I just wanted to touch on that a little bit, is with any new change in the law, albeit a change in the local law, there are various nuances and issues that have to be sorted out and analyzed. And my colleague Dan Christ and I are actually in the process of doing that, and working with Sergeant Hadfield, too, taking a real microscopic look at some of the language and the different twists and issues that arise in the implementation of that, not new ordinance, but rather charter amendment. So we'll keep you apprised of that. Also, some of you, maybe all of you, may have read in the news or heard in the news, just a few days ago, on really the same topic, there was a case argued in the Court of Appeals involving the Kent County Prosecutor and the city of Grand Rapids. It was just argued last Wednesday or Thursday, I think, in the Court of Appeals. A decision will probably be handed down, my guess would be sometime in the first quarter of 2015. But it concerns somewhat of a similar issue. I think the number of communities that have decriminalized small amounts of marijuana now exceeded a dozen or so. I think it was eleven, and now we have several more after the November election. And Grand Rapids went through that prior to ours going through, and they had an ordinance adopted through referendum election. And the Kent County Prosecutor has actually filed a lawsuit in Circuit Court, it's now in the Court of Appeals, basically challenging that, basically saying that the state and the federal law override even the citizens' vote, the citizens' initiatives. So we'll be keeping an eye on that. As I said, just the way the court system works, it's probably gonna be several months before we hear the outcome of that. But certainly, that's an important case to watch, because it could impact not only the city of Grand Rapids, but, you know, have statewide impact as well. So it's a subject that we seem to talk about, I think, every other council meeting or so, and I kinda got the feeling we're gonna continue talking about it for the foreseeable future.
Very good. Thank you. Well, we have come through a fairly challenging year between the snow, the excessive snow, record snow, and the floods, and the fires. And now we come to Thanksgiving. And notwithstanding all the challenges we've faced, we have, in fact, a lot to be thankful for. We have city staff and employees from top to bottom who are heroic through all of these weather events. We have residents who volunteer and who help one another, and who embody the saying from John Kennedy's inaugural address, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." And we see it around us. Sometimes, because they're our neighbors, our family, and our friends, we don't recognize it often enough. When we see it elsewhere in the country, we are prone to admire it more. But my call on this Thanksgiving is, we give thanks for the life we have in this great city, for the people with whom we share it. And spare a thought for people who will go through this Thanksgiving with loneliness, with food insecurity, with ill health. So we think of them as well as we celebrate this Thanksgiving. May all our residents have a wonderful Thanksgiving. On that note, Ms. Boucher, we will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadakel, support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, please call the roll.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. The November seventeenth council meeting is adjourned.